Tony's just out in the hallway, he'll be right back in. If it's all right with you guys, I'm just gonna start now. It's already five minutes past seven. If I could have a motion of the Board of Selectmen?
So moved to accept the agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Like I said, Tony's just out in the hallway talking to the town administrator, but figured we'd get started. Are there any walk-ins tonight? Gender item number two. Not seeing any, okay. Gender item number three is to set the date for the special town meeting. It's just changed a little bit, but I think it's safe to say that we could move forward with the 4th of November.
Okay. Do you want a motion?
Please.
All right, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to set the special town meeting date as Monday, November 4th, 2013.
Second? I have a motion and a second for the special town meeting. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John?
Kim, we don't have to put the date or the time, do we? We just put the date.
It's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, all right, just so people know.
Question, if it goes a second night, did the moderator say it was gonna be the 6th?
Correct, it would be Wednesday night, the 6th.
Okay. Tricia, what do you think?
God, I hope not.
I didn't think so.
We have at least a dozen right now, but not until it gets over like 25. But it's a special town meeting, so there's nothing hugely substantive in terms of the budget, yeah.
Good, okay. All right. Gender item number four is a vote, a discussion of a vote. The bond anticipation is Pam here? Thank you, Pam. How are you?
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Okay, so we sold a note on September 11th, 2013. What it basically was, was at the fiscal year end '13, we had a small 90-day note of 536,000, and we were hoping to use that 536,000 and refinance some old notes, do some new borrowing. Interest rates, long-term interest rates, of course, skyrocketed. It wasn't feasible to do that right now, to pull those old bonds back and refinance them. So what I did is just rolled the 536,000 from a 90-day note to a year. So it went out to bid. The winning bid was Eastern Bank at a rate of 0.6% interest. So, great note. We didn't, we went through the Bureau of Accounts, so I didn't have to get a legal opinion. We saved the town a lot of money that way, so.
Excellent. By doing what you did on your own.
Correct.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Pam?
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Any questions, if not?
No, just that next year we'll have to go back to it again, though, right?
Yes.
And try to roll into something long-term that's gonna be more beneficial than what their rates are.
Correct, and I'm always watching those two old notes, too, so those two old bonds. Hopefully, you know, interest rates will cooperate and we'll be able to do something about it, okay?
Now, on this note, if it, can you get out of it before the year's up?
Yeah, no penalties, no anything.
Right.
And pay it off tomorrow if we want.
Ask that guy.
Excellent.
Okay?
Thank you, yes. Go ahead.
Motion, move the Board of Selectmen vote to execute bond anticipation notes per the recommendation of the treasure collector.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pam. Gender item number five is to interview and vote for the Finance Director, Town Accountant position. This is an exciting night. I went across the hall and met Nancy earlier, I said hello, and Nancy, if you don't mind coming up?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Thank you for having me, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind just, I read your resume over, if you wouldn't mind just saying a couple of things, it'd be wonderful.
Certainly.
I'll open it up to the board, open up to the audience, and...
And just so people know, this is one of the few hires that we actually did. We hired the town administrator and Finance Director.
Treasure Collector. Legal counsel, Veterans Affairs, and also Town Administrator, so.
I feel suitably special.
You're one of our five, there you go.
Move on yours.
Thank you so much. My name is Nancy Holt, as you already know. I'm currently the treasure collector for the town of Marshfield and have been so for the last 13 years. Prior to that, I was with the town of Hingham in two different capacities for five years. So my municipal finance career extends over 18 years, sad to say. Before that, I was in the private sector. I do have an MBA and I have a graduate certificate in state and local government leadership from Suffolk University. I am very much interested in the position for the challenges that it brings. As I said, I am a serving treasure collector. I'm not a serving town accountant. I have operated in the capacity of a finance director. Marshfield does not have such a position, meaning that I actually do the townwide budget preparation, capital budget, attend all the advisory board meetings, all the capital budget committees, meetings, and prepare the estimates for what a project's gonna cost, the impact on the homeowner, those types of things are all things that I've been doing now for eight or nine years in Marshfield. Also, I am a DOR certified assessor. I'm a Mass certified public procurement official. I'm a certified treasurer, I'm a certified collector, and I would be a certified governmental accountant if they allowed people like me to become certified governmental accountants. They're not, you're not allowed to become one unless you are a sitting town accountant and a member of that association, and then they'll let you actually go to their school and attend their certification and attempt to pass their exams. I say attempt, because not everyone does. That would be my goal, to pass them in March. There are two exams, practical and illegal, but up to this point, everything that I could become certified in regarding municipal finance, I have done so and have sought all that additional education. So I have surrounded this particular position, have done parts of this particular position, and helped out in the town accountant's office. I actually did work in the town accountant's office in Hingham for a couple of years before moving on to the treasure collector's office there. So I feel I'm very well-prepared for the position, and I welcome any comments or questions you have for me.
I'll open it up to the board. Just jump out if anyone has any questions or comments. Nancy?
No, I've read your resume and I've heard a lot of good things, so I feel pretty comfortable.
Thank you so much.
One of two of the things that really made this job interesting, and obviously you're right across the hall in Marshfield, you've been there for a while, are some of the challenges here, you know, what intrigued you to this position?
Two main items that intrigued me. One, career progression. I would become a finance director, a position that doesn't exist in Marshfield by title, though I may not appear it. I'm actually younger than you would, than I appear, and I still have a good 20 years left in my career, and it would be nice to make my career go a little bit farther forward. Also, the challenge of the town accountant's position. I have not been a sitting town accountant, nor have I actually been allowed to attend their school or try to get certified in that profession, and it interests me greatly to finish completing my municipal finance education and background.
Good. John, any questions or comments?
No, I just, how soon can you start? No, obviously, it's a very important position for our town, as you very well know, and we have a lot of good people who work here, and so I think the person who we are selecting, and you're certainly highly qualified and come to the top of the list, the people here are a joy to work with, so I think for the person, in this case, your situation, it'll be a very enjoyable job, so.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, you know, I welcome you. Talking, meeting with, through the FEMA issues with the Marshfield Selectmen and Town Manager, I was afraid to say anything, 'cause I didn't know what was said. They're gonna, it sounds like they're gonna miss a valuable person, so look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Plus, I think the other thing is, you've come, I don't wanna say overqualified, but you've come and you complement a lot of areas, so you bring a great depth of knowledge and experience that the position, it's great for our town.
Thank you.
Motion?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is, you come highly recommended. We've spoken to a number of people who have worked with you, either directly or indirectly, and it's a vital part of our operation. You know, that, it's been a big void for the last, however many months it's been, so we're looking forward to getting a real competent person in there to help make Tricia's job easier and, you know, get the whole budget process go a lot smoother, so.
Make our job easier, too.
Yeah. I don't know how the vote's gonna turn out, but congratulations if you get it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Nancy Holt as the Finance Director Town Accountant for the town of Situate, effective 10/21/13 through 10/2016, upon execution of a contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Ananamous.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Nancy, thank you. I am gonna jump over item number five.
Skip, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, six. Skip over six, because Jim Cantwell had asked if I just can hold on till he arrives. Coalition had asked if they could come on the agenda this evening, and Jim said he'd be willing to come in this evening. Some of us met with Jim earlier today, and he's gonna be taken off to Mash, to Washington tomorrow, so as soon as he arrives, maybe we'll jump back to six. If that's all right with everyone else.
Perfect.
Number seven is a discussion of vote for the month of October and November of this year for some one-day licenses at Maritime Center.
Mr. Chairman, it actually is just October, there was an error on the...
Oh, all right. Okay, for just the month of October, then.
Great, and we've been doing this every month. So move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant one-day wine and malt beverage licenses to pre-approved caterers for October event as listed at the Situate Maritime Center, Edward Foster Road, and an additional five licenses to be held for events not yet scheduled. All caterers must present certificates of insurance for liquor service prior to the event date.
I'll second that. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the caterers, Kim, it looks like a lot of them are the same names, so that hasn't been an issue, and it's not to say that a new one couldn't come in, is that correct?
As long as they meet the criteria correct.
Okay, good, good. All right, so we, motion and a second. Did we vote it?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
unanimous.
All right, is unanimous?
Fabulous.
Gender item number eight. The report from the, did I do that right?
Yep.
Yeah, number eight.
Moving right along.
A report from the town administrator in the week ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item on the agenda, the drug-free communities grant, I told them to come in around quarter of eight, so if we could postpone that item, not knowing that item number six would be postponed a little, 'cause we do wanna have the folks directly involved in that, but I do have a few other items that I can share. Thank you for the appointment of the Finance Director/Town Accountant. That position has been vacant for a few months, and as we head into the budget process and town meeting, it's certainly one that, as one of you noted, can't happen soon enough. Like any organization, this turnover comes in peaks and valleys, and we're in a real peak right now. As you know, we swore in the Chief of Police yesterday, and he took, Chief Stewart II took over, or the III, I guess, his great-grandfather was chief, took over yesterday in a nice ceremony. I don't think we've talked at a meeting publicly that Al Bangert, who has just done, I think, no short of a miraculous job as our DPW superintendent, is retiring December 1st. And Al's on vacation this week, but I certainly hope we have an opportunity to recognize the tremendous progress and movement forward he has done in every aspect of public works. Truly one of the most talented people I've ever worked with during my career. He has agreed to stay on, sort of on a short-term basis, after he retires, to oversee the solar and wind array issues, and also, I think, will be sort of a project manager liaison for us relative to the public facilities master planning, but I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to do that more. We're advertising for that position right now. Similarly, I think folks saw on the Mariner last week that our Council on Aging Director, Florence Choate, is retiring December 15th, so we are also advertising for that position as well. So in the four years that I've been here, I think we've had, this will probably make a dozen new department heads that have retired. Mary, as you know, went to Cohasset, Meg went to Carver, so some folks recruit us, we recruit others, but just a time changing. Whenever we lose personnel, there's a little loss of organizational history, but we are also, it's an opportunity to look the way we operate and change things up if we want to before we replace that position, so just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. I did wanted to spend a minute to recap briefly in public session, the board's retreat that we had September 7th. As you know, the board has an annual retreat each year to discuss its goals for the coming year, its budget cycle. We have an executive session to discuss contracts. As you know, all the union contracts, with the exception of DPW, are being bargained now, so that's clearly an implication for FY '15. We did put some money in the budget for FY '14. It should be enough, but I'm not sure yet, as we look at the special town meeting. I think it was really helpful for the board to set some priorities around the master plan and also on pending town issues. You've gotten a lot of inquiries around those issues, and the purpose of the retreat is to have me get feedback from you, so I can design the budget for FY '15, recognizing what those priorities are. You may wanna chat a little bit more about it, but the board's very clear consensus was to address the brown water issue immediately, followed by the challenges we face with the gate school in terms of educating our children, and then if indeed a new school is approved by the MSBA, what happens to the gate school once it empties out after the new school is built? And that's a priority for the board, as far as making sure that that building doesn't wither away and is reprogrammed for a town hall and a senior center, with a senior center being programmed as soon as possible, once it becomes available. So, again, that kind of guidance was very helpful to me, and those are just your top three, and the very close fourth that we'll continue to have in play is forshore protection. So we'll be working on those goals. As far as the master plan goes, that doesn't mean the other issues fall away. We are out to bid right now to hire a consultant to do schematic design for a public safety building. They're looking at three potential sites to place that building on. One of the goals of our new Chief of Police is to really take on that role and be the leader and the coordinator, along with the fire chief, in just getting as much information as we can on the plan and seeing what is needed in terms of existing, in the existing facility for the next few years, and what a new facility's gonna look like. So I just wanted to share that with the board in terms of the week ahead, and if you have any other questions or wanna add anything.
I mean, the only thing I'd add about our meeting is, we discussed this at meetings when we were talking about the library, that it's important for the board at the special town meeting to present all of the pending issues that are coming before the town, before we start voting on any of them individually. So, not that one project's good or one project's bad, but you have to have an encompassing view of what's going on in totality, so that you can vote on the components that you think are most important to you, because I think everyone probably has a limited budget in terms of what spending can occur. So there's a lot of big-ticket items coming down the road in the next one to five years, and it's our job to really inform the public, so that as they start coming before you for votes, that you're aware of what the total picture is. So that's a lot of what we discussed at the meeting as well, and what we have to do to prepare for the special town meeting, so.
Any others? Tricia, we'll get back to that other part in about quarter of eight.
Yeah, when the folks come in. Yep, thanks.
Seeing Jim come in, I guess I'll, we'll jump back to a gender item number six, if that's okay. This is, like I said earlier, a discussion with the Situate Coastal Coalition. Dave, if you don't mind coming up, Jim, if you wouldn't mind coming up. I know Jim's, everybody, let me just stop by saying, you know, if I'm repeating myself, I don't care. People in town hall have been putting in building department, planning department, conservation, town planning. As many of you are well-aware, but many aren't, how much time, extra time and effort that these folks have been doing to answer questions, concerns, spending, as much time needed with each individual resident, as they come in with their concerns about their family's property, their property, their summer home, whatever the case is. Having said that, we, the latest meeting was a hearing that Jim sponsored a bill today up at the State House. A couple of us were able to go up and attend it, and I'm gonna stop short there, Jim, and let you talk about that. And I know your schedule's very busy, you're flying out to Washington tomorrow. So, having said that, I'll open the floor up to you and, you know, we might jump in here, there, the town administrator might wanna jump in, say a few things. But I'll open that up to you, if you don't mind, either one of you.
Okay. Sean, I just wanna start off by saying exactly what you just reinforced, is that the town is doing an exceptional job, making first, sure first, that people are getting educated about the ramifications of both the Biggers Waters Act and the change in these maps. It's a tremendous amount of information. It is impossible to overstate how significant the financial consequences of this act and these new maps can be for us here in Situate. And it's not great solace, but to know that we really are the tip of the spear, it really is the experience here in Situate. The first night when David came and was talking to us was, no, that was only a month ago, and it's been a tremendous amount that people watching should know that their town leaders have done a phenomenal job. Every day with people coming in, wanting to look at maps to be able to know whether they're affected, so professional staff meeting with them, all of us meeting with the FEMA representatives just about a month ago to make sure that they heard loud and clear from us and that we started to get an understanding of what assumptions they were using. It's important for people to know, it really was only a little over three weeks ago that we actually got the maps with the assumptions behind them. FEMA's had three years to prepare these maps. We were given less than 90 days to respond. It is so, so overwhelming for all of our town officials, all of our town staff, and for all the folks in my one staff in my office. Things that you all have already reported on. We had a meeting with Senator Markey, where we did a face-to-face meeting. Sean, you were there, Marty, you were there. I know that we had comments both from Tony and John, because we're all speaking daily on this issue, to make sure that he understood the ramifications of the act and the specific request that we put to him, to try to freeze this in place, to give us enough time for us to be able to properly do what we're saying is peer review. People watching should know, this is a federal act, and it was, the maps are federally done. We don't have a tremendous amount of influence on that. But we did ask him face-to-face, where we said, we're learning from the FEMA folks that they hired an outside consultant. They had the problems of their own sequestration, they didn't have a lot of money, so the peer review that was supposed to be done of maps, we don't believe has been appropriately done. So that was one of our requests. Other requests are to grandfather structures here in town, where people follow the rules, they put their homes at the elevation that was required, or businesses that did the same, and then to find, sometimes even a year later, that the elevation has gone up 50%, it's just patently unfair to folks and will be very, very harmful to us financially. So at these meetings, you know, Joe Norton spoke on behalf of bankers who were saying that they're concerned this could trigger a foreclosure crisis. We had insurance leaders, Andy Wenning. Wenning Insurance talked about how difficult it is applying this on the insurance end. I have the handouts that was done, that were done, that is, by Carol Conway Bowman, when she talked about from a real estate side how difficult, frankly, how it's putting a chilling effect on real estate right now. For people watching right now, they should know, we did a meeting just today. We had a hearing at the State House. Sean testified on behalf of the town, and Marty as well, myself, that the thing that's changing, and that we should all take some encouragement from, is it's gone beyond Situate leading this effort. In Marshfield together, both towns working very, very closely, today we had the Mass Bankers Association do a letter of support, saying that we want the state to try to step in to help, to the degree a state can, and what we're asking is that the Division of Insurance do that peer review that hasn't happened yet. As you all know, because it was the first meeting we had here, the federal government was supposed to do a financial analysis of what the impact would be of Biggers Waters before some of these things took place. That hasn't happened, and what we're told it's because of sequestration, lack of federal funds. So we're asking our state Division of Insurance to do a review of these rates, to make sure that they are not excessive, to do an investigation, to measure the reasonableness of these flood insurance rates, and then make suggestions back for action for Congress. I have to stress that, again, it's congressional action that's necessary. Officials here who are busting their daily work, working so hard, you can't change it, I can't change it, it has to be done at the federal level, but we're doing all that we can. The final thing, that was today's hearing. The good news for us is both chairmen, you heard at the end, Sean and Marty, they said it would take so long for the legislative process. They're both gonna endorse a communication to the governor and the Division of Insurance, saying as the leading legislators, as they were, the two chairman of this Financial Services Committee, they're gonna ask that the Division of Insurance step in. So they were very persuaded by your testimony today. And tomorrow is a hearing with the United States Senate, they have a hearing with the Director of FEMA, the Director of the National Flood Insurance Program, with several U.S. senators. I'm gonna be going as a state rep, they don't let me speak, but I will go at least to make sure to pass in concerns that we have and ask them to take action, so that they're hearing from us. It's just how this has been the most upsetting thing for our residents, of people worrying about potentially having devastating loss of the values of their homes, really worried about being able to stay in their homes, and they're hearing from us loud and clear, and I'll continue to bring the message that you've been leading all along. So thank you very much.
Thank you, just very much. Tricia, do you want everything to add?
To what Jim said?
Yes.
No, just, I'm sure the board would say this, but thank you, Jim, for everything that you've done, just really, probably been working on nothing on this since, as you said, we got the detailed information from FEMA on the assumptions overlaid on the maps. Folks might get contradictory information about when we got the maps and how long we've known, but, and this is a very complex process, but the fact of the matter is, it's just been probably three weeks since we actually got the, it's called the TSDN notebook from FEMA that actually is the basis for which the assumptions were overlaid on all the billions of data points that went into the maps. All the transects in Situate are new, there's 27 transects, and we've been, the town engaged a consultant three weeks ago to look at the maps and analyze them once we got the assumptions overlay. I received an email this morning after this data that has been being analyzed by the consultant since he received it three weeks ago, to see if there was anything that the town could appeal, and I was informed today that the town will be indeed appealing some of the assumptions that have been overlaid on the maps in some areas, and will have the voluminous requirements that are required to be submitted in terms of an appeal met. I wanna underscore the fact that this isn't a panacea for individual residents, that towns may apply for appeals for general, for larger areas, so it doesn't take the place of individual homeowner obligation or interest into seeing how the maps are appealed. We receive here as part of the process, if individuals are appealing, we don't do the appeal for them, we submit it to FEMA on their behalf. What the staff has developed is a letter to the homeowners, saying that we will submit their appeal to FEMA, however, we will also indicate to the homeowner if we think that what they have submitted will not meet the requirements for an appeal and not to have false hope. And the only other thing that I will add to piggyback on what Representative Cantwell said, is we've worked, and always have worked, but especially so in this regard, very, very closely with the town of Marshfield, both their selectmen and their staff. They have engaged our consultant to look at their transects. Last night at the Selectmen's meeting, they interviewed some more consultants to look at other transects. We are hopeful that we're going to piggyback on that consulting contract, so, in an effort of information sharing, so that we're not spending money twice to look at the same analysis and have us all talking together. The deadline, as you know, is October 17th. Our consultant indicated today that if we had received the map four months ago, we probably could've had even more areas to appeal, but since we're working in this very, very tight timeframe and meeting the plethora of requirements that we have to submit an appeal that we want to have sustained, we're focusing on some areas that we believe can universally apply to the town. But again, you know... But again, you know, it's not on an individual home basis, it's taking this data and countering it with some other data points that are defensible and can be used as an analysis as opposed to what FEMA subcontractor has.
Thank you very much. Can you hear us from the board?
Just a quick comment, I mean, I don't, I don't know how much we can comment on the consultant's email that he sent, but it was very telling, and I think, you know, he said that the problem is so vast that he doesn't have the time to deal with all the issues, and he's gotta focus on the one or two things that he think can actually implement some sort of impact on this. And he said somewhere along the lines that a lot of people have concerns, but that FEMA doesn't have to respond to them, they just, what did he call them, comments, I think? That they're just comments, and they're not something that FEMA has to respond to. So this guy sounds like he knows exactly what he's doing, and he knows what areas to look into and what areas not to look into. And like Tricia said, the time constraint is enormous, and the amount of work that this guy appears to have to do in such a short period of time is, you know, is almost, you know, a huge challenge amongst itself. So, I know everybody has concerns here or there, but he knows the ones that you can actually win with. He knows if you have a concern about this or this, FEMA doesn't have to address it. So he's not really wasting his time on those types of issues, but more on, I think he called them shortcuts, you know, there's one or two things that they did that he thinks are most, you know, the most likely to have some sort of impact, so.
And I wanna add that that response came after all the comments that bubbled up from the joint meeting we had on September fourth with Marshfield, when we, our staff, Laura and Patrick and Bill and Neil, spent time with homeowners, and we'd have questions as we reviewed. Those all went to the consultant. And there was one in particular that was raised that we were concerned about in the harbor, and it took them, what'd he say, about four hours just to analyze that one issue? So, but that's, you know, as we've heard, things come to us from people, we've passed that on. And the other thing I wanna say is the Coastal Coalition has just done a phenomenal job in notifying folks, but their website is also really, really good. So sometimes, you know, our website has so many different things with the town going on, but the website for the Coastal Coalition is just fabulous in terms of information for folks to go there as well.
I just wanna add that the, what they've done is they've come up with a couple of things that they look like we can do a decent appeal as a town. But I encourage anybody out there who has any issues at all, I would encourage them that basically thirty days from today is the deadline. So if anybody feels like they wanna appeal, I would encourage them to do that, on an individual basis.
Dave, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just a couple. I also wanna thank the town officials, especially Neil Duggan and Laura Harbaugh and Pat Gallivan, and I'm not sure who else has been dealing with the public up here in terms of showing people the maps and the issues and what they're facing. But we know that they have spent an inordinate amount of time on this, and it's taken away, I'm sure, from their regular work, and we really appreciate that. We also are getting a lot of calls from individuals and helping them out as best we can. And it's a stressful time for everybody, especially people that are learning for the first time that they're going to be in a flood zone, or potentially in a flood zone. There's a lot of financial implications, and obviously, it's been said and said and said, but this is, if this all plays out to the worst possible scenario, it's gonna be the worst financial crisis this town has ever faced. There's just absolutely no question about that. Hopefully, we can get it fixed. And there are two issues, as I think most people are beginning to understand. It's the new flood mapping, and it's also the new Flood Insurance Act, the Bigger Waters Act. So we really appreciate everything that everybody's been doing up here. I am thrilled to hear that the town is gonna go ahead with a map appeal. Our position has been that even if we couldn't, as a town, do a full-fledged appeal of all the transects, at least try to do something about it, you know? And I'm really happy to hear that this is looking better as we move along in that regard. Jim Cantwell has just been phenomenal. He has been to every Coastal Coalition meeting that we've asked him to attend. He's working incredibly hard at the state level. He's going down to Washington tomorrow to see what he can do about getting it moved along a little bit down there. As I said to him earlier today, I don't know how he does it, but he's working on this for hours and hours and hours every day. I gave the board, as you probably have seen, a list of some of the things that we've found about the mapping, some of the issues that might be raised, not so much in the calculations of the transects, but other issues that we've come across. So you have that. We're certainly willing to help out in any way we can. And one final thing for people that are watching, do not let your flood insurance policy lapse, because if you do, you will immediately have to start paying actuarial rates, and they will be in the thousands and thousands of dollars potentially. So, we've said that the last time we're here, and we're saying it again.
Dave, is there a benefit if someone thinks they're gonna be affected by the new map to go out and get insurance now?
Yes, yes. If your property is showing up in the new map, the maps that are gonna be appealed, if a person, as we understand the process, if a person is gonna be in a zone that is not presently in a zone, if they get flood policy now, they go into the program as a preferred risk policy, and that would mean that they can buy the policy and have a premium that's substantially lower than they would be if, once they are put into the program. So obviously, the recommendation is that they talk to their insurance agents in the next few weeks or a couple of months. I believe the new mappings are supposed to go into effect next June, so there is time, but people need to be aware of that as well. But again, thank you for all of your reference up here.
Just one thing, Dave, thanks for referencing and commenting on town employees. It's refreshing, because people work really hard and they don't get the acknowledgement. One person I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of is the town administrator's been working very diligent, long and hard on this, beyond the normal hours, working hours. So just one name that I think everybody should also loop into, both Neil, Laura, and Patrick, who's working tirelessly, she's the head of the whole operation, and certainly, she's been going to meetings and so on, I just wanna make sure that's aware.
Could I just bring up one more thing, Tricia, the town administrator? I emailed Tricia yesterday about a rally that's being talked about between Marshfield and Situate. Nationwide, there are gonna be rallies held on Saturday, September twenty-eighth. We've been kinda throwing around the idea of having a rally in Situate for both towns. The location that we've been talking about is Cole Parkway down by the bandstand. Just to make some more public awareness here. I picked up the events application form this morning, as Tricia suggested. I guess I'm a little concerned about the fact that the Situate Coastal Coalition is a loose conglomeration of all town beach associations. It's not an entity into itself. And I guess, under normal circumstances, the town requires liability policies for an event, I suppose it's more on the order of a large kind of event, we're not anticipating more than maybe two or three hundred, if that. But I was just telling Marty O'Toole before the meeting, maybe another way to go about this would be if the Board of Selectmen kinda sponsored that event themselves and were present there, maybe that would make the most sense. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but I'd like the board to think about that. I don't anticipate that the rally would last more than an hour. And I think, Jim, you said you would be available to be there, so I think it's just, and I have in mind that we would do everything possible to make this a very positive rally, just to be able to get the word out again. So I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not asking for any decision right here on the spot, but I would like maybe the board to think about that.
To have Situate do its own, at the meeting, we spoke about trying to get Situate and Marshfield.
I think it should be both Situate and Marshfield, I think maybe Jim would agree with that.
I agree, and have you spoken to the folks in Marshville, will they be willing to come over here, do they wanna meet at the bridge, or?
We talked, at our meeting that Jim was at last week, we talked about doing it on the bridge. We were concerned about traffic issues and parking and everything else, there's good parking at Cole Parkway. It would be, and I have been talking to the Marshfield Citizens Coastal Coalition, and they also suggested Situate. Maybe it would make sense too, because FEMA was down there, now it's time to have something up here.
Dave, what date did you say, the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth, it's a Saturday, Saturday at noon.
At noon.
Where's the closest federal building?
What's that?
I said, "Where's the closest federal building?" A good place to do a rally.
Not too far away, the Coast Guard Station.
They're good guys, though.
You know, there'll be some boat activity, maybe people taking boats out, but not typically in Cole Parkway, that happens.
Right, it's not usually all that busy, though.
Right, right. Are there any others?
The only thing I see, I like the idea, and I know it is a national event, really, but I don't know about exposure on Cole Parkway, that's the only thing I was concerned. You know, as far as being able to do the best we can, because it's gonna be, you know, a little, what, two and a half weeks, it's a final push to try and get the word out to people who may still be in the dock, which, just in the last few days, I've talked to people that didn't, still were not aware, so, which, I just don't know if there's a better location, that's all.
I think, well, there may be, but I think Cole Parkway does make some sense, because there's good parking there. You've got the Harbor Masters Building where you can just have people look over there and tell them that the water will be three quarters of the way up to the roof. It's pretty stunning.
No, my only point, Dave, is that, you know, people coming through the harbor and things like that, I don't even, I'm not so sure they're gonna see that there's anything going on at Cole Parkway.
We'd do some media coverage. People would know about it. I don't think you want a thousand people there, you know, two or three hundred would be perfect.
Okay. Are there any other comments, anything from the public about Neil? I'm sorry, Neil, did you have something, did you have your hand up? Tony just.
I'd actually like to acknowledge all the administrative staff working in the offices, they've really taken the brunt of the, doing a wonderful job with the people coming in.
Thank you, Neil, I appreciate that. Are there any other comments from the public? Thank you very much for coming in. I'll certainly keep that in mind. I don't see a problem with seeing if we can streamline the insurance policy to have an event held.
Actually, one of, the reason I just had Dave fill it out wasn't for the fee or the insurance or anything, Dave, you really don't have to do, because it's not an event so much as it's a gathering, but the special events application asks all those questions so that we can give it to the police department, so they can make adequate judgments about traffic control and whether a detail's needed. So don't worry about all that other, I just wanted you to fill it out.
Right, yeah.
The logistics.
Right, right. And we could probably come up with a police detail, but I think, the more I thought about it, the more I thought it made sense, if the Board of Selectmen was actively involved in it, it might make it go smoother.
I'm sure we can work out the detailed.
That's right, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim, safe travels.
Yes, have a good trip.
Take care.
Good luck, Jim. Tricia, can we jump back to eight or not quite yet?
Yeah, Ann Marie's here.
Yep.
All right, okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you.
The other pot of agenda, and I'm not gonna start, but the other pot of eight is the Drug-Free Communities Grant. When Tony comes back, we'll be discussing.
John. Thank you.
We just, this part, right?
Yes.
Thank you. How you doing? Thank you. How are you? How are you? Did they leave him virtually for?
No, that's okay, we'll get him to.
Yeah, if you give Kim two, she'll make sure he gets it.
Anybody else think it might be?
Sure. You can give Mara and Ruth in the back.
How are you? This fellow's almost down.
Oh.
Hit the press, hit press.
Prince?
Yeah. Hi, Ruth.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm very good, thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming in.
Pretty excited.
Tricia, would you like to start, this was under your report, do you wanna continue?
Sure. I had put this as an agenda item for Kim to include when we had just found out that we received the grant, but between your agenda being posted and us finding out so much more information, I thought, well, it's best that before another two weeks go by and we're gonna hit the ground running, that the two main movers and shakers relative to grant actually get to share the glory, and actually, more deservedly, are the two people most responsible, I think, for this wonderful grant that the town's got, an exciting opportunity for our community. So Ann Marie Galvin and Greg Rannieri, I'm happy they came in, and we gave you a little information on the press release, but, you know, I said, we met today and I said, "The town applies for grants all the time, so typically, the board won't be in the weeds of knowing what everything's about." But, so, this is a case where we've got the grant, and members probably don't know a lot about everything that it encompasses, or that we even applied for it a year ago, so this is an opportunity to get you a little more up to speed, since it's for five years, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'll turn it over to Ann Marie and Greg.
Thank you so much.
Incredible.
It's incredible. We're very happy to be here, and some of you may know about this already, the Situate Facts Coalition is a community-based organization, we started actually in August of 2011. I'll just start.
Sure.
I'm so excited.
We didn't know.
I know, I really, I can't sleep. So we started a little over two years ago with virtually no money. It started at the high school, at the push of South Shore, and the invitation, rather, of South Shore Hospital's Youth Health Connection. Some members of the police department and Situate Public Schools Administration were invited to participate in a kickoff, "Would you like to start a substance abuse prevention group in your community?" And people responded. This is around the same time that I was emailing Tony and the former police chief and school superintendent and all that, trying to start something on my own. Those two forces sort of joined, and Greg and I, around the same time, and things got rolling. We had many people from throughout the community take part in a community assessment, looking at our problems and our strengths as a community. Selectman Joe Norton was part of that group at that time, among many other people in every sector of the community. And we just started getting the ball rolling. We met many times throughout the 2011 and 2012 school year, with a wonderful, wonderful response from the community, and like I said, virtually no funds, but we still got a lot done. And that's the first page in this handout that we shared with the group. And we don't have to go through all of it today, because you'll be here all night, but really, quite a bit happened, a lot of community awareness, forums at the Pier Forty-four Building, brochures. Hop in, what do we, we helped, we brought Chris Heron with the help of the police department. We had several articles in the newspaper, just a lot of awareness building and education. We've had a lot of speakers at the high school, and really, and we've met and brainstormed and come up with our plan to go forward. And throughout this time period of over a year, we kept saying, "We should really apply for one of those DFC grants," and that's what we're here to celebrate today. It's called the Drug-Free Community Support Grant, which is awarded through a very competitive process by the federal government. It's the Office of National Drug Control Policy, that's the acronym, ONDCP. So this award was posted on whitehouse.gov last Monday. We are one of about forty communities in the state of Massachusetts who are current grantees, and it's a pretty big deal. And one of the things you have to prove is that your community is really ready to do this, that you have all the sectors of your community represented. It's not the school telling you what to do, or the police, or the Board of Selectmen, it's everybody in this together. And we were, that was the easy part in the town of Situate, because people really showed up and helped, and people have been volunteering, and it's been pretty amazing. Most notably, many participants from Situate High School Administration, the past principal, the current principal, Greg Rannieri, who's the Department Chair of Health and Wellness here, who already had sort of laid the groundwork through data collection and surveys, we just, it all just came together at the right time, so we had a nice story to tell the federal government. We were able to prove And one of the things you have to prove is that your community is really ready to do this, that you have all the sectors of your community represented. It's not the school telling you what to do, or the police, or the board of selectmen, it's everybody in this together. And we were, that was the easy part in the town of Situate, because people really showed up and helped, and people have been volunteering, and it's been pretty amazing. Most notably, many participants from Situate High School Administration, the past principal, the current principal, Greg Rannieri, who's the department chair of health and wellness here, who already had sort of laid the groundwork through data collection and surveys. We're just, it all just came together at the right time, so we had a nice story to tell the federal government. We were able to prove, oh, I'm sorry, on page two, you'll see that there are nine new coalitions that were also, stop me whenever, by the way, because I will keep going, interrupt with questions. There were nine communities in Massachusetts, Situate being one of those, that are new grantees, so these nine are beginning a five-year cycle. There's an opportunity to renew for years six through 10, during which phase, there's a reapplication process, but during that period, your funding would wane, and you would have to prove that either the town would absorb some of the costs, or you become a 501(c)(3) organization with other funding sources, you'd prove your worth, frankly. And that is very hopeful, given our infrastructure already. So you'll notice here on the same page that often there are partner, there's a coalition name, similar to Situate Facts, a community-type name, and partnered with a legal grantee. And we were very grateful to Patricia, early on, to say, yes, we'll basically co-sign for you, that Situate will help administer the federal money, because we're not a nonprofit yet. We're just a group of community members. So we're very grateful for that, for that support, and the support that we've received all throughout the process. That was one of the prerequisites. We couldn't, literally could not have done it without that partnership. The application went in last March, we heard last Monday, and as I alluded, some of the grant requirements were a mission statement, which is in your packet, that you have twelve sector representatives confirmed. So that proves that, and it was really neat, it's one of the foundations of these types of drug-free communities grants, like I mentioned, is that it's a group of people from throughout the community. So yes, you have a police representative, and a school representative, and a parent representative, but you also have a substance abuse professional representative. You also have a clergy from your town represented. And that list, and their names, and their commitment should be in here. Can I skip that?
It's a little something like this.
Thank you, yeah, so that's a little, we call it the Sector Representative Chart. That indicates people that literally signed an agreement, a pretty binding agreement, for the first year, and those can be renewed annually. So you need to have a young person under the age of eighteen on your, basically your steering committee, a parent. In our case, we also are grateful to have someone who works at the high school as an adjustment counselor, who is also a parent and has been there since day one. We have the wonderful Adam Conrad from South Coastal Bank. We have a media representative who is also a parent. We have the fabulous and dedicated Amy Heffernan, who is a health educator at Situate High School. I could go on, these people have just been so wonderful, and you can go through it all. Lieutenant Detective and now Police Chief Mike Stewart. We're just thrilled about his appointment and his commitment throughout this whole process. He has such a depth and breadth of experience in substance abuse, that he's been, he's just been wonderful. He's come to all the meetings that we hold at the library, and he has just such a perspective and a story to tell and share, and expertise, you know? Everyone comes there with a story and a background, and it's just, it's awesome. We've had Reverend Barbara Welch, formerly of the First Baptist Church. We have someone from the Y as a youth serving organization. We have Dr. Sarah McSweeney Ryan, who's a Situate High School alum. She's a parent of young children, and also a pediatric hospitalist at South Shore Hospital. So she has some very real professional and personal experience working with babies who are born addicted to opiates. And each of these people has a specific task that they're gonna do for us, in addition to bringing our mission back to their sector. So the whole idea of this, this concept of having twelve sectors is that they will come and they'll be part of it, and they will contribute on a subcommittee and be a regular volunteer, but also that they will bring the mission back to their sector. So they will go back to their colleagues at South Shore Hospital, for example, or they will reach out to pediatricians in Situate with their expertise and share what we're doing. So this little thing has just exploded in a really neat way. And it's just grown a volunteer base, and it's just, it's really, it's magic, it really is. And then last, almost last but not least, we've had Ed Jacobs from DA, District Attorney Tim Cruz's office, who's helping with grant funding for little supportive grants, and also working with the Situate Police Department to get us a 24-hour prescription drug drop box in the police station, like the town of Weymouth has, and many other coalition towns have. So we'll continue to have the prescription take-back days in August, but also anytime you wanna get rid of your old meds, you can do that anonymously. And lastly, we have Danny Lynch, who's a Situate parent and also a substance abuse counselor. So these people are awesome. On the next page, you'll see a very loose illustration of our organizational structure, and you'll notice that many of those key sector representatives also chair subcommittees. When we went through the, am I talking too much? Okay. Tony?
You're doing great.
When we went through the assessment process in year one, which was a lot of brainstorming, we had leadership from the National Director of Prevention from SAD, Julie Nussbaum, led us through that process, and it took many months, and there were many parents from all the schools, and many young people from the middle school and the high school, as well as all these kind of professionals I'm referring to. We brainstormed. We looked at data from our town, and we came up with these buckets of things that we'd like to do. And these became the framework for moving forward. So these are the main areas. Lots of times, these people meet independently, at the high school, at Starbucks, at the police station, in someone's living room, and they work on their little projects. So for anyone that's watching this, they need not be afraid to attend a big coalition meeting. They're very much status report, kind of idea sharing, information sharing. If you wanna volunteer, these are the people that are working on projects pretty independently, and it's working wonderfully. All of the items that become goals of ours are all supported by data, and that's really Greg's forte. I don't know if you wanna talk about the process that we have, that many people don't know about yet, about collecting behavior data.
Yep, so there's no doubt about that Facts represents the genesis of something truly special within this town. It has the potential to impact long-term cultural behaviors and norms within this amazing community. So, that being said, this is truly a marathon effort. This is not something that even in five years, we hope to, it will never be done. So the moment we rest on the concept of we're done addressing substance abuse and prevention within the town is the point where that comes back and bears its ugly head. So the coalition itself is really committed to the spectrum of substance abuse, on one end being prevention and the other end being intervention. So anywhere along the line, we wanna convince the youth that we don't even want you to think about starting. And if you are a heavy user, we wanna help you. We wanna try to provide interventions to support you, to bring you back. So really, the vision within our grant application is deep, it's comprehensive, and it's focused, and it's a lot of it, a lot of it's driven by data, pure data, because that's where it's telling us to go. We administer the Youth Risk Behavior Survey at the high school level and at the middle school level, and that gives us data. We get to see trends over time. We get to see change in behaviors. We get to see if interventions or programming that we're implementing, whether those are effective. Our goal is to continue to use that data to make decisions going forward, so that our human resources and capital is spent in a wise manner. Really, it's amazing being part of this process, because I've seen, when you combine the amazing community that we have, the coalition that's being built, the commitment by everybody involved, the creativity of the group, there's just really something special happening. So consider yourselves officially invited to be part of the coalition, because the reality is, is to achieve our potential, and for this town to, again, to change those cultural norms and long-term behaviors, it's not gonna be possible without high-level support. And so that'll happen over time. The group is surely ambitious, we're very resourceful to find funds. This is one of two grants that we applied for and received, just in the past four months. We also applied for a smaller grant through Community Health Network Alliance, that Situate belongs to, which was a $10,000 grant that we got, to implement a parent education program for the upper elementary to early high school-aged parents, to give them the strategies, to engage in meaningful conversations with their teen about substances, and how to have the prevention strategies, to disengage from potential tricky situations involving substances. So you can see that on our flow chart, you'll see that parent education is a key piece. That is a key piece we're gonna be focusing on this year, because we feel if we engage parents with the strategies to talk to their kids, and we open up lines of communication, and there's good dialogue, that you have the ability to change that perception. There's no longer, it's an unspoken, you know, just start by asking and listening to your children about, what do you know about substances in this town? Just sit back and listen. You'll be surprised, the amazing things that you hear, and how you can help support your children. But again, all of our strategies, you'll see in the packet, are rooted based on data, whether it be from Chief Stewart, whether it be students, whether it be large-scale state trends from hospitals. We take a look at that data, and we try to use that data to inform every decision that we make. For example, when we hear teens say that there's just not a lot to do in the weekends, thus the genesis of Fifth Quarter, that Ms. Benoit is spearheading. So that's another subgroup that, you know, that's really took off, and it's just an amazing thing, after football games and basketball games, there's things and events and activities for kids to engage in, other than leaving it up to their own devices. So there's really environmental, meaningful environmental strategies that we are gonna implement through this grant that is going to change the long-term behaviors and culture of the town, we're hopeful of, and with your support, and the continued support of Ms. Bajasey, that the future's extremely, it's just, there's a real sense of optimism and true hope. So hopefully, you guys feel that same energy from us.
That's awesome.
I don't know where to begin. It's amazing, like Tricia, I didn't know all this was going on.
We keep a little profile.
You do, I do recall Joe being involved about two years ago. It's remarkable. I'll wait till to go to last, if anyone else has any comments, questions, I don't wanna...
I'll just point you to, for your late-night reading, one of the, the last couple pages have more specifics about the plan, about what we're gonna do in this year one. It was a pretty stringent criteria, what the money can pay for and what it cannot pay for, even though we plan to do all, we're supposed to use all comprehensive strategies. So, for example, you cannot pay for speakers, can't use the money for that. You need to use the money for things that are proven to work. So evidence-based education programs.
Environmental strategies.
They're called environmental strategies. I wrote a little bit about that here, on the second-to-last page. And if anyone is interested in details, eventually be on our Situate Facts website, which is under development, situatefacts.org. But it's fascinating. And, you know, you think that this stuff is sometimes maybe far-fetched, to think that you can actually change the data that we're talking about. You can change, for example, the thirty-day, have you drank more than five drinks in a row in the past thirty days? This is what we ask our students at the middle school and the high school, and we have that data. And we're gonna change those numbers. And the numbers in Massachusetts are high, they're high in the South Shore area, but we're already working towards them with these specific things that have proven to work. And the other drug-free communities that are grantees, they've seen their numbers go down. So the whole model is funded for a reason, because it does work. So that's what I am so excited about, that Greg already has three years of data, because he's been doing it at the high school and started at the middle school recently. So we were kind of ahead of the game. Many people start that, he was being modest, but many, many communities start that, once they get funded, we already had it. So we were certainly an impressive applicant. And that's what these goals on the page, the action plan with 12-month goals, these are the simple goals that we have, that we want to achieve, and there are multiple strategies underneath each one. So that's where some of the parent education things come in. And I listed a bunch of those on the very last page. This is what we're gonna do with the money. We're gonna share information on youth substance abuse trends. We're gonna share that data with the community, because it shouldn't be in a file where people can't benefit from it. And we're gonna show you it moving in the right direction. We also have already begun, thanks to Patricia again, to share local treatment options. I'm out in the community as a parent all the time, and people say, people don't know where to go. They don't know where to get help for their kid, when there's shame and stigma associated with addiction. So we now have that available. It's on the town of Situate website, it's also on the Facts website, and the Situate Public Schools Guidance employees also have that. So we researched, we got credible, local, adolescent-specific counselors, detox centers, rehab centers, support groups, Learn to Cope support groups for parents, for families who are suffering from opiate addiction. It's all there now. So we're gonna get that information out there. We're in a small, isolated town, and that's not readily, it's certainly not something that people are talking about everywhere. That's one, I could see, I could talk all night. So these are the other things that we're gonna do with the grant in year one. Launch some Narcan and overdose training to families, develop a social norming campaign. You often hear that everybody's drinking, that straight A student is drinking, that scholar-athlete, this one, that one, everybody, you don't, you know, people say, Anne Marie, you don't even know what you're talking about, that really all doing it. The truth is, they're really not, and we need to get the, the majority of kids are not using. And we need to share that, the pro of that is, and especially sharing that among youth, it's called social norming, and that's a proven strategy in these other towns that are doing it the right way, to say, it's okay, there are many kids who aren't doing that, and you can find them. And then we give them alternate activities to do. So we're gonna work on a campaign to share the good news. What else?
I'll interrupt you for one second.
Yeah, please, yeah.
We don't wanna stand united.
I get very excited.
You know, it's, I don't think, it's not a surprise to me, I remember talking to you two years ago, and I don't think anyone here, to just see the energy and the passion that you put into this project. And that's the reason this is successful. You know, you started it, you pushed it, you didn't say no.
Don't shut up.
And you worked hard, and you're the reason why this is where it is.
That's very kind, Tony.
Well, you know it's true.
There's a lot of, there was a lot of support.
Well, I know you got a lot of people along the way, but if you didn't start it and you didn't push it, you know, you got the ball rolling, so congratulations to you.
Very proud, very proud.
I've been to the events, I've listened to the speakers, I've been at the Fifth Quarter with Chris Benoit in the back there, who runs that. It's a great event for kids to go to. You've gotta give them alternatives, than going, you know, to the Widow's Walk Golf Course, or wherever Sean went. And, and, no, but I think it's, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful program. And this is unbelievable numbers here. I mean, $600-plus thousand to put into this program. This isn't a little legit.
Yeah, this represents the premier substance abuse prevention grant in the nation. It really, it is, you know, this is a grand slam in the postseason, as far as a victory for this town.
And all of us have kids, and all of us support you, and all of us wanna do what we can to help, and, you know, thank you for the effort that all of you have put into it.
Awesome.
Thanks, Tony. Jono?
Yeah, I have to tell you, when I got the email the other day, I'm overwhelmed by it, and hearing the information. And to be quite candid, I'm proud, proud for you folks for doing this. You know, we've been hearing an awful lot from the other extreme of all the negative stuff, all the problems, and trying to figure out how to address it, not in the intervention, not in the prevention, but in more or less the enforcement, and in many instances, the sad circumstances of having to address it. This really is a phenomenal grant. You've done a grand thing for your town, for the kids, and I have to tell you, this is extraordinary. You know, to be able to use this for the next five years, plus hopefully ten, and whatever, you know, the board can do, whatever I can do, certainly, to continue this, you know, I just look at, obviously, the programs that I've seen so far, my kids are younger, they're coming up now, the DARE program, and how I think that's so important. I mean, I begin to look at even the kids in elementary school, and hopefully in the future, that's something we can hit the first grade, the second grades, to start right out of the gate, so that kids will understand it. And so I just wanna let you know, very proud of what you guys have been doing, and everybody should be. This is the time when, this comes before this, boy, it's a great opportunity. I don't mind if you speak all night, because frankly, everybody in the news should get this, and TV should get it. So I thank you both, as well as all the other members who have taken the time to invest in their community. This is invaluable for our children, for our kids, and for their future, and hopefully so that they will have a future. So I just wanna say thank you very much.
It's a privilege to do it.
It really is.
I just wanna add that, it's, I mean, I just, I haven't known about it for that long, but it's well-thought-out, it's excellent. I mean, that's really all I can say, and it's certainly well-needed in this town, so, but really, excellent, great job.
Awesome, thank you. Awesome.
I can't thank you enough. It's unfortunate it didn't happen 20 years ago.
I know.
You know, thank you. Can I ask a question?
Please, yeah.
Are you a teacher?
No, I'm a parent. So I have four young children who are all now at Jenkins Elementary School. Mrs. Harris is our crossing guard, so she knows all about this. So we talk about it all the time, and share resources and things like that, because that's how this whole thing works. And, no, I have a lot of teachers in the family. My two sisters are Boston Public School teachers, my mom was a teacher. I should be a teacher, but I do, since then.
The reason I ask is, you know, people come up to us and say, I don't know how you do it. It's, you know, and I'll say, well, there are other people in town that are coaches, that volunteered this way and that way. And it's this sort of stuff, that you guys, you know, pick up the ball.
I think the greatest thing, I don't mean to interrupt, but the thing that's made this really work is the fact that I've been around this topic for a while, and this is really the only formula that will work for change, is the coalition format. With, instead of, you know, there would be a point where, like, jeez, if the schools only did, well, if parents only did, well, if law enforcement only did, and everybody gets overwhelmed with the totality of the situation, and they almost feel helpless. There really isn't help, there's a very optimistic and hopeful feel within the group, that together, those sectors and everybody else is doing their part, whether it be Fifth Quarter, whether it be grant writing, whether it be impact on schools, if we all work together and coordinate those efforts.
It all adds up.
It all adds up. It all adds up. So it's really all the, some of the parts coming together. So it's exciting.
Thanks, Jim, but before I let you go, Mara Curran has something she had to...
I just have one question. Thank you. I'm sorry. Florence Maracurran, First Parish Row and Situate on parent.
And it's this sort of stuff that you guys, you know, pick up the ball.
I think the greatest thing, I don't mean to interrupt, but the thing that's made this really work is the fact that I've been around this topic for a while, and this is really the only formula that will, will work for change, is the coalition format with, instead of, you know, there would be a point where like, geez, if the schools only did, well, if parents only did, well, if law enforcement only did, and everybody gets overwhelmed with the totality of the situation, and they almost feel helpless. There is, really isn't help, there is a very optimistic and hopeful feel within the group that together, those sectors and everybody else is doing their part, whether it be fifth quarter, whether it be grant writing, whether it be impact on schools, if we all work together and coordinate those efforts.
It all adds up.
It all adds up. It all adds up. So, it's really all the, some of the parts coming together. So, it's exciting.
Thanks, yeah, but before I let you go, Mara Curran has something she had to give you.
I just have one question. Thank you. I'm Maricarren, First Parish Row and Situate on parent, former school committee member, and on the advisory board now. So, I actually had an email pinned to you, Greg, this afternoon when I saw the announcement, because it's so fabulous, so congratulations. And I need to look into your information, but I do have one question. The fifth quarter is one of the first great steps that have been taken to give kids a place to go to. Does that funding cover any type of initiative like that for like a permanent...
I wish it did.
...community place for the kids?
We've talked about that a lot, like, that's one of the things that I'm really interested in personally, and I think it's the long term, it's probably a year thirteen type of goal, hopefully not, but a, a regular pla, like a teen center-type place. That's a, that would be a wonderful thing. Steve Spencer, who's on the rec commission in my next-door neighbor, hello, Steve, is on our steering committee, and we talk, you know, that would be a nice partnership with the rec department and future community building space. I would love to see that. It's not on the, that doesn't fall within the funded piece. In fact, the fifth quarter events don't fall within the funded piece either. So, it's sort of like entertainment value. So, all of the, and it's kudos to parent Christina Benoit, who is here, who late last, or late last January said, "Let's just do this." And Tony volunteered, a lot of parents from the community volunteered. It's an idea, just to spend a very short amount of time on that topic, because it's, it's powerful, and I think it's been very successful so far, and I think it will grow into, I hope, a teen center of sorts someday, with maybe the rec department or whoever wants to do it. I think it would be awesome to have drop-in things, schedule things, a place for kids to go that aren't on a traveling sports team or whatever. There's, but we have a Y people, rec people, and we have a friend at the Boys and Girls Club in Boston, actually. So, the fifth quarter was started in Pennsylvania some years ago after there was a, a student died in a drunk driving accident after a home football game. Post-party, house party or something, and the, the young man died. And their sad club there started this thing, like, "Let's do some, let's give the kids a place to go," because everyone was going to the games in that town. And then they sort of coined that phrase, and the Town of Needham in Massachusetts has a similar coalition to ours, and they have been doing it for a couple of years with great success. They get a couple hundred kids to attend their events, and I think we'll get that here. So, Chris Benoit piloted last year, we had, we scrambled for donations, and we're now still accepting donations. We had many, she did a letter campaign just about a month ago, and we had our first one on Friday. What was the date, the first date?
September sixth.
September sixth, which was the first week of school and the first home football game. So, only on evenings, weekend evenings, so if there's a Friday or Saturday game, we're planning them after all of the home football, basketball, and eventually other events. So, the next ones are October eleventh and October eighteenth, they're in the gym. Principal Wargo is totally behind it. We had a student DJ, DJed the first one. We were able to pay him a little bit. We were able to provide Maria's pizza and waters. We had foosball, we were actually looking for a ping-pong table donation. We had a foosball table donated, a can jam donated. It's awesome. We did that one in the small gym. It's really cool. We shut the lights off and make it look cool. And it's supervised by Cory volunteers from the community. Hopefully not the parents of the kids who are there that night, because that is a deterrent. But we want it to be cool, and we're, we're now polling students at the high school for their ideas. Situate residents who don't attend Situate High School are also welcome at the events, which is wonderful. So, if you go to the Charter School or B.C. High or the Voke, you can come too. It's for you to, to hang out with your friends. Middle school's not welcome at that yet because they have a lot of evening events at the middle school. And we're really seeing that we need to target after eighth grade from our data. So, we've had many, and you can maybe chime in, Chris, we've had a lot of donations from O'Donohue Insurance.
Situate Federal.
Situate Federal Savings Bank was the first.
Anderson Fuel.
Thank you. Anderson Fuel. Symphony Learning, Todeskies, Symphony Learning, Todeskies, a few individual, a few individual families. It's been great. So, so that is not funded, but we still, we need to pay for pizza and entertainment for these events. I got a check from a parent of an elementary school kid for fifty dollars the other day. There's, continuing to roll in, and I'm sure we'll be knocking on some booster club doors in the near future so we can keep doing it, but it's been really good. We had over a hundred and fifty kids at the first one. We're doing it again October eleventh and eighteenth, and we're just hopefully, hoping to keep adding them. So, that's hopefully the seed for a future heavy-duty...
Well, can you guys make sure you come back every so often and tell us what the update is?
Absolutely.
Part of the plan.
No, I will still.
Great. John, just have one other thing.
One quick question, and I don't want to give a, send us off on a tangent. I don't want to create any false hopes.
I'll try.
But, you know, you mentioned a, a, a teen center or something.
Yep.
Spatially, what would you be, what would be ideal spatially for, for a facility outside of the gymnasium?
Right. So, I actually have a, a little bit of research on that that I can be happy to share with the board. They're successful when there is a dedicated, paid employee that runs them. So, someone like a Jen Vitale-type person with youth programming or youth development experience, kind of like a Boys and Girls Club-type person running them. So, it can't be volunteer-staffed. Many towns have tried and failed with teen centers in the past because it's, it's not open when the kids go, or the thing was canceled kind of thing. So, it really has to be a true, with a, a business plan and investment. The city of Brookline is opening one right now, and it was, that was a multimillion-dollar deal. I mean, that's possibly over the top, but they had the need, and they did a lot of fundraising. It was actually the Epstein, Theo Epstein's twin brother and his wife who did all the, the planning for it. So, I think the building spaces can be flexible, but it has to be dedicated. So, or the time has to be dedicated. I actually met with Florence Choate at one point, and we talked about possibly sharing space with a senior center, and that would work during the school year, but not in the summers, kind of thing. So, it can't be, oh, it's senior hour, oh, no, it's teen hour, kind of thing. So, but it would be something that had scheduled programming and drop-in stuff. So, certainly after-school hours and weekend day and evening hours are the ones that are, those are kind of, it's more like the, the time and the staffing, that's the big prerequisite, and the space. So, it could have a couch and Xbox tournaments, a kitchen is very popular, so you can do cooking classes, or the, the flag football league goes there, and they make pizza on Fridays after their little tournament on the field. So, outdoor space would be key. It doesn't have to be fancy. Some, some communities are building big civic centers with, with pools and the whole shebang. It doesn't have to be that extravagant, but it has to be staffed.
If you're interested in joining the youth programming subcommittee, I very well may.
I know, I think it'll happen, you know.
And that's just, it's like, someone will find a passion within this grant that they, that they find and they move towards.
Right.
You know, the reality is the totality of this is vast. But if everybody takes their piece and is committed to it, it really is, we're seeing some amazing things happen. Just in conclusion, I just want to express publicly my sincere appreciation for Ms. Anne Marie Galvin.
Thank you, Greg.
You have been, it's been a pleasure to work with, and it's been a pleasure.
It worked. Thanks.
Thank you. We thank you as parents more than...
I know.
True.
That's for them.
We appreciate it.
Thanks. We'll be back, absolutely. Two weeks. And I should say, if we're still on the net, we have quarterly open meetings where everyone's invited to come. You don't have to sign anything when you walk in the door. We currently hold them at the Town Library in the downstairs meeting room, and that meeting will be on Monday, October 21st, from 6:30 to 8:00 in the evening. So, anyone's welcome to drop in and see what's going on.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Moving on to agenda item number nine, there's other business. Marty?
Yep.
Or correspondence, if you, either, either one, do you have other business or correspondence? It doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Well, I was going to read a letter from the Town of Marshfield Police Department. Dear Town Administrator Bajasey, I wanted to write you to express my sincere appreciation to Situate Harbor Master Mark Patterson and First Assistant Michael Beers. On October 5th, 2013, they organized a regional maritime training that took place in your town. The training involved the towns of Marshfield, Situate, Hull, Braintree, and the city of Quincy, and the United States Coast Guard. Each of the above communities and the Coast Guard participated in marine law enforcement training. The training was a great success and helped to not only standardize local response to maritime situations, but also continue to build on relationships with these groups. This type of training is invaluable, in my opinion, as we rely on our neighbors and the Coast Guard in times of need. This standardized training ensures that in a time of emergency, all of our responders will be able to operate on the same page. The Situate Harbor Master staff played an integral part in organizing training and showed great initiative in recognizing the importance of these events. As a border neighbor of Situate, I appreciate this type of professionalism, as almost daily our respective Harbor Master departments work together. It makes my job a little easier when I know that in a time of need, the towns will provide us with mutual aid and possess the skills necessary to get the job done. Excuse me. This past Monday, Marshfield and Situate Harbor Master Departments responded to a boat fire in the North River. Our two departments worked flawlessly on the various techniques they just trained on. Training is the key to success, and Harbor Master Patterson and First Assistant Beers clearly recognize this important fact. I do not want their efforts to go unnoticed. I look forward to our continued partnership. Sincerely, Philip Tavoris, Chief of Police and Captain of the Port.
Thank you, Marty. If you, there's one other piece?
Yep. Yep, got a letter. Excuse me. It's from John McCarthy, dated to, to, Dear Al Vanguard, I would like to take this opportunity to commend the Situate Department of Public Works, and more specifically, the individuals involved in preparing the school grounds for the start of the school year. They went above and beyond the call of duty to provide an attractive exterior environment as our students, staff, and parents arrive for the start of the new school year. Veteran principals commented to me that this is the best grounds have looked in years. The condition of the grounds is the first impression that the public sees as they arrive on our campuses. A positive first impression goes a long way in creating an overall positive educational experience, and instills a sense of pride in everyone. I cannot thank them enough. Please pass on to the following individuals and anyone else I may have missed my sincere appreciation for a job well done. Fran Leiden, Mike Soper, Kevin Stanley, Mike Breen, Brian Collins, Andrew Stevens, and Devin Flynn. Sincerely, John McCarthy, Superintendent of Schools.
Nice to meet you again.
Very nice.
And I, that's not the first time I heard that, someone else in conversation that said that all the schools look for the opening day of school. Going on to other businesses, I'll start with John.
Sure. I just wanted to communicate to the board that last week, on Thursday, September 12th, I went to the Plymouth County Advisory Board meeting. It's basically county commissioners run the county, a budget of about ten million dollars. The advisory board is actually run, it's like a legislative, if you will, board run by a few of the town selectmen, and then the actual voters happen to be a selectman from each town, there are twenty-seven of them. And I just, to quickly kind of catch you on it, it's just that one of the things that kind of, you know, county commissioners had indicated that they've submitted some legislation that they believe is going to help the county. Time's going to find out whether or not it does or not. I'll certainly report more about the county and how it's being handled with respect to their budget. They made a transfer of $230,000 for fiscal budget 2013. What that means is, just recently, in order to cover the costs and expenses for last year's budget that started last July and ended in this June, they had a deficit of $230,000. And what they did was they offset it by other revenue that they said they had overbudgeted, in other words, they had excess. To be honest with you, they haven't audited their books in over seven years, since 2007, actually six years. So, I don't know how they get their figures. It's almost like a pea game or a shell game, because they're moving things around from one to the other. I will say that I'll, I'll continue to report back on it when I go to these meetings. It's, there's a lot to be asked about, and, but one thing I wanted to touch on was an issue that was in the Boston Globe this past Sunday, and if I can at least report from the information I received this morning, or this afternoon, rather, is that the Plymouth County Pension Retirement Board, now, these are two separate entities altogether. There's the county run by the commissioners, and then there's a retirement board. As, as accurately reported by the Globe reporter, Situate was going to be facing an increase of 23% on top of what we're paying annually. Right now, we're paying about 3.5 million each year, and so they're going to increase it unilaterally to the tune of about $900,000. And if you begin to do that number and say they're going to take that away without any input from the towns, such as Situate, that would be what we call a budget buster for our own budget, because we're using a lot of those monies for running our own budget here in town, both school and town side. I guess you could say it's kind of a mixed bag, the decision. The decision was to push out for a period of four years from 2030, which is where we're supposed to pay for this unfunded liability, to four more years later, which is a good thing. Instead of having to pay the 23% or 900,000, they've decided that, you know, they're going to reduce it to 400,000, which is about, I think it's about 10, 10 and a half percent. Now, the problem with that is, is that they've also attacking on another 8% on top of that, not this year in this budget that we're dealing with, but the next budget year, fiscal year, which would be 2015.
2016.
2016, excuse me. So, what I guess I'm trying to tell everybody here is that this is a major issue, and while we are increasing our pay this year from 3.5 to 3.9, that number's going to go up in less than two years. And that's going to have a profound effect on us budgeting, and obviously, and, and what we're trying to do for the benefit of the town long-term with our strategic plan and planning of different things. So, I'll report back on it, but I will say, one thing that I was dismayed at is that while there are five members on this Plymouth County Retirement Board, one member phoned in, and one member apparently didn't have the time to listen to the town managers and treasurers who had gone to the meeting, because he wanted to vote it. And I have to say that our town administrator was there, and she was there representing our town and trying to explain the situation, and it's, you know, again, I wasn't there, but it seems to me that maybe there was a rush to judgment, and, and certainly, a decision had already been made by the board members to vote what they're going to do without listening to the thirteen town administrators who had signed a letter, and treasurers from the communities to say, "Listen to us, and, and this is what we're expecting." So, I'll report back more, and I have to tell you, it certainly begs a lot of question that we, as a town, need to take a little closer look at this, hopefully along with other towns, and see if there are other available avenues to address these pension issues that frankly are our obligation, that we have to do, but to see if there's a better way of handling it for the future for the benefit of our town. So, I know it's a little more long-winded, and I guess I'm, I'm up on my soapbox here, but I just think that people in town should be aware of that there's a larger scope here in the county and there's certainly a lot of questions that should be asked. So, other than that, that's all I have. Gentlemen.
Can you, we're going to have to have layoffs if something like, if this happens? Can we maintain the staff we have? Tricia?
You know, Sean, it's really premature.
All right, too early to talk.
When we get, I mean, this is just one budget line item that, you know, we're looking at for a budget that takes place, you know, nine months from now. So a meeting with Mara Thursday? Are we meeting tomorrow? Sorry. And the financial forecast, the financial team will probably get together to look at the forecasting sooner than we typically do. And then Tony will probably have a forecasting meeting sooner than we typically do, just because, like I said, this is one item of multiple budget items. And we already know it's, you know, eight and a half percent over our levy limit right now. Or do the math, right? Eight percent, so.
Okay.
Sorry about, that's the information.
Any more good news, Sean?
No. That's no good news, just negative.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, that was on my list as well, John, and I can't reiterate how important that is. That's one of the things that we discussed at our retreat the other day, that this is an upcoming potential expense that comes to the town. Our taxes go up, I mean, our levy limit goes up about a million, maybe 1.1-ish every year with the two proposition two and a half increase. And 500-plus thousand of it just got spent on this, this one line item. And that 1.2 million dollars is supposed to be used to pay pay increases, you know, contract negotiations, increases in terms of different contracts that we have, let alone expanding our services and working on projects that we're working on. So this is a huge, huge hit to our community. And like John said, I was very dismayed when I talked to Tricia today and she told me the feedback that she got from the group, there, there was no, there was no give and take on it. It was just a done deal. So, you know, it's definitely something that we have to look into. On a brighter note, John, I'm glad you're in the back there. I wanted to thank John and the cable department. Last week, many of you may have noticed that they are now showing the high school football games on cable television two or three times a week right after the football game. So I think as at the last email I got, the games are usually on Friday night and they'll be replayed on Tuesday night as well as maybe one or two other times during the week. And it was a great, you know, I was expecting something to be all choppy and not really flow well, and it was really a great broadcast. It was like you were, like you were at the game watching it. So, John, thank you for all the efforts of doing that. We've talked about it for a long time. Thank Rich Long, the rest of the people on the cable committee and Herb Devine for, for the efforts of getting that there. This extra content on our cable television, instead of constantly watching these scenes of Situ, I think are great. So, good job on that.
What about the game itself?
Well, why don't I go into that, Sean?
All right.
We can go into the sports report. Situ, high school football team won last week, beat the, the reigning Super Bowl champion Sharon. Their record's one and one and they play again, I think, this Friday night as well. So they're off to a great start. The soccer team, both boys and girls are off to a great start. And the golf team is off to a great start as well. And they won tonight, they beat Middleborough and they are four and one to start the season. And field hockey as well, I think is off to a great start. So I can only go to so many of the games, so if we could kind of speed up. One other quick thing that I want to mention, you know, we had the people that were involved in the fax thing in here today and I just wanted, Friday night, what was it? Friday night, I think it was, I went to the Stevermans have a golf tournament. And I think they've raised, this is like the 10th or 11th or 12th year that they've had this, this fundraising event, and they've raised over a half a million dollars. And another great outing, they played golf in the rain. It was, you know, hundreds of people there. Jennifer Vitale's involved in it and, you know, just another great group of people that are doing things that put back into the town. And they gave out their award, the rec Mr. C's award, out to Betsy Calnan, who has done great things for the town and currently runs our town's Special Olympics and does a lot of work with, with those athletes. And she won the Mr. C's award this year. And I had the pleasure of, I, I work, my daughter and I work with her on the Special Olympics. I had the pleasure of giving her that award. So it was just another great event. So, thank you to the Stevermans and thank you for Betsy for doing all that you do. That's it.
That's all? Cycle football fundraiser?
I could do that, but I just, I felt I was crossing the line.
All right, Marty.
Well, I'll, I'll go into that a little bit. That, that was quite a fundraiser they had for cycle football. They, that a couple of the Patriots were there. Which is?
Vince Wilf.
Yeah, Vince Wilf, I knew that, but.
Jermaine Wiggins.
Jermaine Wiggins, that's who I was trying to think of. But it was, it was quite a time. And that was on Friday night. John was there and as well as Tony.
Marty left, so we didn't have a corner.
Well, I had, I had to get, I couldn't have three of us there, so. Anyway, so I'm just going to give a quick update on what's been happening at the old Pier 44, the Situ Harbor Community Building. A lot of people have been asking. At this point, the fire alarm has been replaced. They're, they're, they've gotten some pricing on carpeting and things like that. They're getting close on the end of that. Plumbing is basically, they're pressure testing all the pipes to make sure everything's good. And they're going to be getting the restrooms up and running. And they're working on windows and things like that. And the other, and the roof is, is supposed to begin on October 1st. And just so everybody understands, this, any of this money does not, is, is basically comes out of the mitigation funds from the T. So as these repairs are done, we want to get Pier 44, Situ Harbor Community Building, open as soon as we can, so. And that's being worked on by Kevin Kelly. That's about all I have.
Okay. The final thing was, while we're on the fundraisers, the Reedy Tournament was again Saturday night. That was another one that I attended part of it, the golf part of it. That, that was enough. I did so bad out on the golf course. I didn't get invited to go to the activities afterwards. But anyway, I did, there was one serious thing that I wanted to recognize, some volunteers. And if you guys haven't been by there, bring your kids down the Maritime Museum on, on Driftway there across from Transfer Station. Next time you guys are going by, stop in when it's open. I just, this past summer, there's been, I guess, well over 500 people that have gone through there. And a very good friend of mine said, who goes to these museums, said, this is the coldest water of any other museum like it. And like I say, if you have a chance, stop by there. And I'd just like to recognize some of these individuals that would go there, open up, open up, clean up, whatever the case was, make it available to these people that use it. And the following individuals is Sandra Frankman, Carol Apgar, Mary Larry, Bruce Bent, Dick Vines and Diane Proudy, Dave Ball, which I, I would have brought this up earlier when Dave was here, but he, I didn't think of it, and Jane Adderton. Once again, I, it's been a while since I've been there, but I do recall when I went there, it was, it was pretty neat. So a lot of times these things go unnoticed. You go by, every one of us goes by there, you know, many times during the week and you just don't think to stop in. Next thing you know, going by. Please do. Thank you to those people. Finally, if that's it for other business, how about minutes?
Would the board selectmen vote to accept the regular session minutes for April 2nd?
And second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or not present? Marty?
Not present.
Move the board selectmen vote to accept the regular session minutes for September 3rd and 7th.
Second.
Second motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Finally, is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sign some documents.
Move to adjourn and sign documents.
And a second.
Second.
Second by Marty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.